Good evening and welcome to the regularly scheduled city council meeting of Wednesday, June 18, 2025. Let the record show all councilors are present with the exception of Councilor Fossil. At this time, we will do pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, adds and deletes, add Department Committee reports number three B. Could I have approval of the agenda?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Swyberger.
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. Move on to approval of the minutes, approve the minutes of the Hibbing City Council meeting of June 4, 2025, wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Whitney.
Support.
Support by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. At this time, we'll move on, right to administrative appeal. Dennis Richards, permit application to cut and remove trees from right-of-way of the alley extension across Vacated 33rd Street West between Seventh Avenue West and Eighth Avenue West in Filmon subdivision, Hibbing. It was a denial from the city. At this time, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Borland.
Mayor members of the council, so as you stated, Mr. Richards submitted a request to the city for a permit to remove trees through a portion of a property that had previously been vacated by the city back in 2008. He submitted his application via email and after requesting a map, Mr. Story requested Mr. Richards' supply as to exactly where he was going to cut. One was not provided. Mr. Story rejected the permit request in that the map was not forthcoming, so he didn't have the information to determine as to where Mr. Richards would be doing the exact cutting. Mr. Richards has exercised his right to appeal that determination and Mr. Story denied his request. Mr. Richards has determined apparently not to appear tonight but rely on the information that he filed, which is in your packet this evening. So with that being said, I would turn it over to Mr. Story to give explanation to the council as to why that request was denied.
Okay.
And you can certainly then field any questions from Mr. Story, if you have questions of Mr. Story about his explanation or about the appeal process.
I just want to put on record that Mr. Richards did reach out to me to let me know that he wouldn't be here tonight, which I passed on, so just so that's on record.
Very good.
Mr. Story, Tyler.
Mayor Council, when I received the email from Mr. Richards for the permit application to clear trees and/or brush within our city right-of-way, there's been two vacations in that neighborhood, 32nd Street, 33rd Street, so I wanted to have a map from him to see where he wanted to cut trees, where he wanted to cut brush. Within the right-of-way, we usually cut those trees or any brush needed to clear for utilities or head power, sanitary sewers, whatnot. So that's why I wanted the map. He did not provide said map, so I denied the request.
Okay. Hearing what Mr. Story had to say, any questions of the council? So we don't, what I hear you saying, Mr. Story, is you don't know exactly what he's looking to remove.
Not exactly, no. That's kind of why I wanted the clarification of a map. So if it was approved and he went and did the cutting, then I could see exactly where he was cutting.
Okay. All right. At that, at this point then, I'll ask for motion, hearing what Mr. Story had to say and Mr. Borland, as regarding approval of this appeal or...
So you needed a motion to approve Mr. Richards' appeal or to deny his appeal and affirm Mr. Story's initial determination?
Yes, so I need a motion to approve or deny.
Right.
Yep.
I'll make the motion to deny.
We have a motion to deny by Councilor Swyberger.
I'll support it.
Support by Councilor Bayless. Any discussion? Jesse, if a map was sent, so would he still have the opportunity then to possibly have an okay, as long as you had the information in your hands that you could make a sound decision?
Depending on, Mr. Mayor Council, depending on what the map shows where he wanted to do the cutting, if it's within the right-of-way, we do the clearing in the right-of-way, Public Works or Public Utilities if it's for overhead power. So the alley right-of-way is an easement for water, power, electric, gas. So if we determine that need to be cleared for those utilities, then we would do the clearing.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, we have a first and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries, appeal denied. At this time, we'll move on to consent agenda. One, approve council payable dated June 12, 2025, checks 1-801-96 through 1-80312 and drafts an amount of $3,927,122.93. Two, approve the city payroll of May 30, 2025, an amount of $659,204.10. Three, approve the city payroll of June 13, 2025, an amount of $659.871.58. Four, approve the updated code enforcement supervisor job description effective June 19, 2025. Five, approve the purchase of a new scoreboard for the memorial building. Six, approve the updated facility use agreement, the Hibbing Chisholm Youth Hockey Association, for the use of the memorial arena. Seven, authorize the hire of Chloe Olson for temporary recreation assistance pending pre-employment contingencies. Eight, accept resolution to accept grant funds from Essential Health Adopt-A-Park Community Health Improvement Partnership. Nine, authorize the hire of Aaron Schreier for the casual CSO position pending pre-employment contingencies. Ten, authorize the hire Lila Mackey for the casual CSO position pending pre-employment contingencies. Eleven, approve the raffle application request of the Hibbing Baseball Association to hold their raffle at Hill-Nibbert Field on Wednesday, July 16, 2025. Twelve, approve the temporary on sale liquor license application of Mr. Nix to dispense alcohol during Jubilee and street dance celebrations on Saturday, July 12, 2025. Thirteen, approve the temporary on sale liquor license application of Sports Taverna to dispense alcohol during the Jubilee and street dance celebration on Saturday, 12, 2025, July 12, 2025. Approve the temporary on sale liquor license application Sammy's Pizza to dispense alcohol during the Jubilee and street dance celebration on Saturday, July 12, 2025. Fifteen, approve the temporary on sale liquor license application Palmer's Tavern to dispense alcohol during the Jubilee and street dance celebration on Saturday, July 12, 2025. Sixteen, approve the temporary on sale liquor license application of the Iron House to dispense alcohol during the Jubilee and street dance celebration on Saturday, July 12, 2025. Seventeen, approve the temporary on sale liquor license application of Mike's Pub to dispense alcohol during the Jubilee and street dance celebration on Saturday, July 12, 2025. Eighteen, approve the temporary on sale liquor license application Boomtown Woodfire Grill to dispense alcohol during the Jubilee and street dance celebration on Saturday, July 12, 2025. Nineteen, approve the temporary on sale liquor license applications of Do U to dispense alcohol during the Jubilee and street dance celebration on Saturday, July 12, 2025. Offer Resolution 20, offer resolutions number 250609, accepting $2,500 from the Hibbing Kiwanis Club in support of indoor play park and children's program. Twenty-one, offer resolution number 250610, accepting grant from Walmart in the amount of $3,000, which will be used towards various officer training initiatives. Twenty-two, set the next Hibbing City Council meeting for Wednesday, July 2, 2025, at 5:00 PM in the City Hall Council Chambers. Twenty-three, set the next Hibbing City Council workshop meeting for Wednesday, July 2, 2025, following the regular city council meeting at 5:00 PM in the Hibbing City Hall Council Chambers. Hearing all our consent agenda, wishes of the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read and published.
We have a motion by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Support by Councilor Hildebrand. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. At this time, we move on to the public hearing and we have one citizen tonight, Mr. Petrovnik. And Mike, if you'd come up and please state your name and your address and you'll have five minutes. I will let you know, I do time it, so with one minute to go, I'll give you a one-minute sign. Thank you, appreciate you being here.
Thank you. My name's Mike Petrovnik, I live at 217 First Avenue North in Kelly Lake. Many of you know me, and if you don't know me, I've probably ran into you. My concern is for the health and safety of my family, primarily in the kids and animals that live next door to me at 213 First Avenue. I've exhausted every single resource to call from the chief of police, various city-held offices, Blight for a full calendar year, the NPCA, Human Services, the DNR, and the list goes on. I frankly need your guys' help. It is extremely inconvenient to live next to who I live next to. There's constantly garbage blowing into our yard, the smell is pretty putrid, humid days, it smells like a garbage dump. There have been instances where we've smelt sewage, I believe it comes from a camper that's in the backyard. There are cars parked up to the center of the road at times on Second Avenue, which makes it unable to drive through. If those vehicles ever needed to be emergency vehicles, that could be a major problem. My home area due to my neighbors becoming unsafe and unhealthy, their kids are always playing in the road because there is no yard to play in. They play on scrap steel, old rusted, parted machines, lawn mowers, parts of four-wheelers, some of you have seen it. They play in abandoned and on abandoned vehicles. Not too long ago, we lost a little boy in Matonia from playing in an abandoned vehicle, so that hits home. The summary of it is, the kids aren't cared for safely, it is a concern to me. They're animals, I can echo pretty much the same sentiment. Some other concerns that I have, not too long ago, I was loading my two and three-year-old girls into a vehicle and the neighbor drove by at about 40 miles an hour, the speed limit's 10. They scared the out of my girls and quite frankly, if one of my girls would have ended up in that road, they would be gone today. So I was pretty, pretty mad. We are attracting all kinds of animals, mice, bears, raccoons, to this property for obvious reasons, food. There are some weird and concerning things that are going on there. There is a family that has been coming in and out and living out of vehicles there. There's another gentleman that has been squatting in their camper too, so it's just kind of uncomfortable for us. There was a project that just went on, it was a dig, I don't know if it was approved, how it was approved, I don't know what the process is, but it's kind of puzzling. I don't know that this guy called before he dug, which is, I believe, illegal. He ran into a power pole, guide wire, Minnesota Power had to come and reset that. We lost power for a little bit at my house. This dig is very significant and unsafe for that family, for my family. The house, quite frankly, could probably fall into that. The fact is, is I bought a house in a good, not great neighborhood in 2018, and I now own a house that is severely devalued because of who lives next door. The common denominator is the ownership Blight and its Patriot Investments, the gentleman's name that owns it, is Paul Silbernick. I'm someone who's tasked with cleaning up somebody else's problems every single day, all kinds of garbage. We now live kind of in embarrassment because we are associated with these people by proximity. You know, I just, I don't think that this would happen right here in town, I don't think it would happen in front of the Hibbing High School, I don't think it would happen there. You know, and I could go for 15, 20 minutes on this, but at the end of the day, I just, we live, we live in the Wild West, it's Kelly Lake, and we are taxpayers with that, streets should be monitored and just as Hibbing's are. We have posted speed limits that are often doubled and tripled, we have race cars going around the lake that have people walking around it, there are homeless that squat behind the lake, crotch rockets and motorcycles that could care less what the rules are. I'm asking that the property next door be dealt with and whatever move can be done, Blight cleanup needs to be relentless, the house needs to be looked into for safety, a lot of different things. And as for Kelly Lake, I'm asking for police presence, for city leadership to come and assess some of the problems, to be present, to have a hand in bettering the community that has been very proud but is losing pride. You know, it's, I'm just asking for your guys' help, please come out there, come and look, and if you need somebody to go around with, I'll, I can be that guy. I can show you personally kind of what I'm talking about, what these properties look like. We can sit by the beach and watch people speed. It's the Wild West and we need, we need help, so.
Mike, I thank you, your time is up and it was a fine report on the issues that you're dealing with. City councilors, anything, we can't act on anything tonight, but you can make us aware of it, which you did, and I appreciate your offer to take a look, I certainly will be one that will. Councilors, any other issues or concerns or comments?
I guess I'm just curious, you've turned it into Blight, you've talked, you know, talked to the chief, like what were the, how did that all play out?
So what occurred last fall, we ended up being at the top of the list for the Blight cleanup. So from what I understand is they went through the process, they went through the finding process and ended up getting to the point where we would do the cleanup. The cleanup was supposed to be scheduled, locked in, and Public Works showed up, everybody was ready to go, while the property tenant, not the owner, blocked the property in with his vehicles, all that were registered, so you couldn't tow the vehicles and there was no access to the property. Shortly after that, it became winter, so things just kind of go on pause. I figured that things would be dealt with come, you know, spring 2025, right? I figured it'd be at the top of the schedule. It hasn't been. You know, I mean, I, I'm, it gets old calling all the time, and I know there's plenty of people here that have called as well. So I don't know right now where they're at in that process, but it has been, it has been an ongoing and developing thing.
Yeah, I mean, if it was on the list and it was, obviously, where they're making the attempt to go there for the Blight issue, it should definitely not be forgot about.
Yeah, yeah, it's...
Which it sounds like it has.
It's tough.
Yeah.
Yeah, any, any other questions?
Tyler, is Annie, you can add to this, please?
Yeah, so I was there in October to help facilitate the cleanup of the process. He had kind of touched on the blocking end of the property, so we have ten, we, we'd gone through all of our actual legal process through the city in order to clean up the property. So when he, once he blocked it in, well, this is what we're gonna do, move your vehicles or we're gonna tow them. He had asked if we could get a search warrant for the property, I said yes, like we, that won't be an issue, we will apply for it. Upon applying for the search warrant, the judge denied access to the property as the judge's interpretation of our ordinances reflected more of a civil process than a criminal process. From that point on, we started sending him tickets every day, and I can't even tell you how many tickets he has. I think there was 75 that were written from that date to the first of the year. Those all go through a collection process, I can tell you, he probably has well over 100 some tickets, just from the city's aspect of things. The previous process is when, once we continually gave them the administrative offenses, it went to a criminal offense, which doesn't necessarily help resolve the issue if our local judges are understanding our ordinances as a civil process that can't be enforced by law enforcement. We had met with Andy Borland, our code enforcement PBA people, who tried to come up with a plan for cleaning this specific pro, this, this specific property, and it is absolutely atrocious. I've been there multiple times, I've gone by there multiple times, and if our Blight process is not going to work with people that are willingly going to allow us onto their property for the cleanup, we have to come up with another solution for it. I, in the last two months, I've been off, technically now I am back. Last month and a half, I've been researching public nuisance laws and recommendations from the League of Minnesota Cities. It is quite blended between the criminal thing, the criminal aspect of it and the civil aspect of it. A lot of it seems to contradict itself, and I've tried to come up with a reasonable solution to it, and I can't, I can't come up with one without the civil side or the, the court orders from non-criminal side that don't deal with law enforcement, and that's pretty much what I have.
You mentioned League of Minnesota Cities have, a lot of times, they, they see the same issues and, and they give recommendations, is there nothing they could do in that?
The rec, there's two, there's two avenues. One, we issued them a public nuisance ticket, which is a mandatory court appearance, where the, the Blight tickets and the unpaid city admin tickets become a misdemeanor level offense, that doesn't require a court appearance. So we're figuring out over the last two, three years, a lot of these people with these blighted properties are not having to appear in court at all, it is just being assessed to them, and whenever they either go to have to pay a fine or file taxes or whatever it may be, their, their stuff is garnished and then just brought into the court, and they don't have to appear in front of a judge. So the one recommendation is start the public nuisance portion of it, which would not allow us still to be on the property to clean it, but it requires a mandatory court appearance, which then will supersede pretty much our actual ordinances that we have in place to combat this.
So is this something, Andy, that we need to look at, our ordinance? It sounds like you two have been working together, I mean, what, or is it just this one situation, the interpretation of the judge at the time?
I think, I think a lot of it fell onto the interpretation of the judge, I mean, a lot of the people are more than happy to have the city help clean up the property, this person is exercising what they believe their rights and, I think, I think in retrospect, I think I helped the police department write the warrant on this one.
Yeah.
We cleared up some language. This particular judge elected not to allow that access, so do we have to revisit the issue and, clearly, we're not helping this gentleman and his neighborhood with what we have thus far. Another concept was to come up with an administrative warrant, which is more of a blanket thing. It's more to gain information though than it is to...
Yeah.
...about people versus get, get you onto their property.
It's more, the administrative warrants more for the inspection portion of it, if you're denied into, say, like a fire or something that's not criminal in nature, public utilities or something along those lines. That's the administrative side of thing, which again, isn't law enforcement related.
So help me understand then, was this property, is it owned by somebody and it's being rented and it's the tenant?
Yes.
So where's the responsibility of the landlord?
So he, well, so he, the owner of it is the Patriot Investments, the taxpayer is Matt Lewis. So it's split between the taxpayer being Matt Lewis and then Patriot Investments, which was Paul's...
Silbernick.
Yep. I talked to Paul on the phone specifically on that day when we were there to do the cleanup, I had asked him if he had been up to the property in any way, shape or form in recent time, and he said that he had had, or he had not. I asked him, well, have you, have you received the Blight notices? Yes, I have. And if you've done anything? Nope, I have not, I've relied on the person, the tenant there to take care of it. Well, he hasn't, we're here to take care of it currently right now. And then, so we've actually issued him tickets as well. So there was a point in time where he, he had made a deal, Paul had made a deal with Matt, that he would help facilitate cleaning up a portion of the scrap metal by either pay for a cost or give Matt money in order to stop certain tickets going to him and then just strictly going them to Matt in some fashion or whatever. We've still been giving Matt tickets every day, I can't tell you if we've been given tickets to Paul and Patriot Investments, the city admin tickets, not, not our court tickets, I guess.
So it sounds like they have an absentee landowner.
He owns, he owns multiple, multiple blighted properties in our community.
If I may, there's one directly right down the block, that's about the same value, so.
Oh, Andy?
Yeah, I guess, Andy, I guess I lean on you then is to see, there's gotta be a process forward...
Sure.
...that gives us the jurisdiction to clean the property. And I know, I want the residents of this community to understand, it's not a simple process. People think you just go clean it up, no, it takes time and it takes a process, and Tyler, that was an outstanding explanation, thank you so much, but we have to be able to deal with this. It's been one of our priorities and I think we've done a good job, but we have run into some roadblocks.
Yeah.
And this is definitely one that I didn't know about till right now.
So I'll talk to Tyler again either Friday or next week, I have an idea, maybe we can float as an idea and skirt the judge's interpretation of that one, that particular judge's interpretation anyway of our warrant. Have an idea that we'll try, whether that gets us in court in a hurry one way or the other, we'll find out.
And Mayor?
Yes?
I received a picture after the rain of the landscaping that this gentleman did and it's, it's pretty bad, so if we can get Jesse or his team to go out there and take a look and see what's safe and what's unsafe, but it, it was pretty bad, I just saw Jesse the pictures too.
Yeah, the one you just showed me a minute ago.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and, and I mean, you know, basic maintenance on my home, I'm on the roof from time to time, I do have some bird's eye view, it's, it's bad, it's really bad, and you can see exactly where the smell is coming from, I feel awful for the kids, they're animals, et cetera, so I mean, as much as it's a burden for me and my family and the value of my home, et cetera, there is concern for the children that do not sign up to live in these conditions, so.
Okay. Well, Mike, any, councilors, anything else?
Mayor Council, we can have Public Works, whatever's in the right-of-way, so we can clean up what's in our right-of-way. I know there's some piles of dirt and some boulders and stuff like that, that the gentleman left me a voicemail two weeks ago, said he was gonna clean that up, he never did, so we can go clean that up, but we can't go onto his property. So anything, oh, if the power pulls towards the road, we can clean up a public works.
Mike, you heard what, you know, what was said tonight and it sounds like we'll be looking or that we will be looking into a different legal aspect, because it's as frustrating for us as a council as it is for residents who have to look my...
Yeah, and if there's anything that I can do personally to help you guys, by all means, please contact. Yeah, it's, it's tough to live with, so, you know, and to, to watch daily.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, did you leave your number with Candy by chance? Yes, I have it right here.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, we'll move on to Department Committee reports. Ms. Olivanti.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I have with me tonight our executive director of the Hibbing, the HRA of Hibbing, because our first item is a collaboration project that the city and the HRA have been working on for the past, I don't know, couple of years. And so the first item is a request to approve Resolution 250603 to commit local match for the HRA of Hibbing's Masabi Manor development and approve the mayor to sign the threshold letter. In your packet tonight is the Resolution 250603 that talks about the requirements for the local commitment, which is, I'm gonna get this in front of me here. The local commitment to assist the HRA of Hibbing's application is $2,464,413. Jackie will talk through how that amount came to be and, and the process for arriving at that amount. And then the threshold letter talks about the other aspects of the point in the application process for the Minnesota Housing Finance Agency and their Super RFP, which talks about the conveyance of the land with a market value of $42,000 and the building of the road to access both of these properties. And all of that is in your packet tonight, but once you make the motion and put that on the table, if you so choose tonight, then we can present the rest of the topic.
Very good, thank you. Thank you. All right, uh, so what we're looking for, you want, you want us to have a motion before Jackie talks? Is that what you're correct?
Sorry, don't mean to interrupt.
Yep. Yep, so we have a motion, uh, to create local match for HRA of Hibbing. Uh, Counselor Hoffman-Sockman, is there support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Swiber. Any discussion?
Mayor?
Yes?
I just wanna make sure that everybody knows it's 25-0611. Uh, there was a heat of resolution.
2506-11?
Yep.
Not a 03.
Pardon me. Thank you.
All right, and I'll, Mayor Council, if you don't mind, I'll turn this over to Jackie to lay the groundwork, and then you can ask some questions if you have.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, what I prepared was more of an update and an understanding of what it is that we're doing, so I just wanna be clear about that. If there's more questions, I can certainly follow up with them. So, I just really wanna thank you for the time and the support that you've given our HRA over the last several years. Um, as you know, we support some very important populations in our community. Um, and, you know, I really wanna just go over a little bit about the Greenhaven Apartments redevelopment. So, tonight, um, it really marks a key moment for us. Your decision to help secure that local support, to submit a competitive application for Phase Two, which is the final phase of the Greenhaven Apartments, it's so critical for our community. So, as you know, thanks to HUD Section 18 program, we have the opportunity to replace the Greenhaven Apartments that were built in the 1950s, early 1950s, and are well beyond their useful life. We will be replacing them with sustainable housing. Um, in partnership with Center City, as you know, we, um, opted for a two-phase approach to give this development the best chance for success. With the strong local support from the Cobb Cook Place, we secured $26 million in funding to build the new development, um, which will consist of 52 units. This phase is expected to close this winter, and groundbreaking will begin this spring. Tonight, we will focus on Phase Two, which is Masabi Manor, and we'll complete the final 48 units of this development. I just wanted to get into the council a little bit why we did it in two phases, which we've talked about before, but really, it was funding limitations. Um, the complex is large, um, in greater Minnesota, it's very hard to hit those key leverage points in order to score high, so we knew we couldn't do it all in one phase and get it done, which we tried that before, um, a few times. So, we knew at that point, we needed to break it up, so that is exactly what we did, and, um, now we just really wanna finish the job. With Phase One nearing closing, we're ready to move into Phase Two, so I thank you for your support as we're moving. Um, ensuring, doing so will ensure that the design and material consistency, and it will also reduce future maintenance costs. Um, once those residents are relocated to Cobb Cook Place, the rental subsidies will follow, and HUD will remove the Declaration of Trust from these vacated units, allowing the HRA to sell the Greenhaven property at fair market value, with the city of Hibbing having the first right of refusal. At that point, the Greenhaven units will be vacated, unfortunately leaving scattered noncontiguous sites. This makes the site suitable for redevelopment unless we proceed to Phase Two. So, this is definitely our moment to act. I wanted to also let the, um, council know, beyond Greenhaven, we've secured $2 million from MHFA to preserve and improve our other three public housing sites. Each one is in good standing, and we deliberately excluded the Greenhaven, um, from those funds to prefer, to pursue a full transformation, as we're doing through the Section 18 and tax credit program. Um, as you know, for many years, we stayed level with a $50,000 a year levy, which we used to do a lot of predevelopment and looking at, um, completing studies and doing those types of things, because as you know, as a federal entity, most of our money is restricted. But under the, the levy, getting that levy is something we can do more creative things like we have, including, um, studies and the predevelopment, uh, research, and working towards something great. So, I really appreciate, um, your continued local commitment. It truly matters. Um, as you know, MHFA's scoring process is highly competitive. A local match is worth 16 points, which is the largest category of, of possible points. For Phase One, we secured that full match, um, but we barely cleared that, um, funding threshold, and a lot of that has to do with the way things score and being in greater Minnesota. And some of the things, it appears as though sometimes it's, gives those in the metro a greater edge than in greater Minnesota, right? Because they have a lot more resources and opportunities, so, um, but without that, we would have never been selected. So, I thank you again for your support, um, and we just know that achieving a full match for this is essential for funding. Our Board of Commissioners has obligated our full levy of $100,000 towards this project. Additionally, I did secure for the HRA, or we secured for the HRA, $100,000 from St. Louis County. But I also wanna let you know that this is a critical step, obviously, to get that local match, but it doesn't end here as far as our funding seeking goes. We are continuing to engage with other entities whose application deadlines are outside of this application deadline, so our intention is to apply to the IRRB for additional funding. Um, we've had some really productive conversations with them, um, and being that they selected us for funding last time, they know this is a two-phase project and will complete it, and will also add such great value to the community. I do believe that we would have a potential competitive edge on that. I can also tell you that I have engaged with two other funding sources to potentially add to the match. So, that essentially would reduce the city's actual obligation. Right now, we need this money so that we can show up with our application at the amount we have. But really, I just wanna let the city know that we're not sitting back saying, great, we got the money and moving on. We are gonna continue to try to fill that gap that the city is helping us right now do, so greatly appreciate it. And I think some really other key points I just want people to understand is that it's not just about points for housing. There's millions in outside investment coming to our community for these developments. There's also local construction jobs and an economic impact. We'll have safe, stable housing for families, and it, most excitingly, generational change for our community. As a move-to-work agency, since 2022, we've gone beyond bricks and mortars of the HRA. Fifteen of our residents have already achieved homeownership. We've supported over 100 residents in their efforts to gain employment and increase their income. And two residents have graduated from college. One is currently sitting on the bench right now, waiting for a union position. And next week, we'll actually be meeting with Senator Smith's office to discuss our program and the impacts that it has in our community. So, it's not just the residents we serve, it's our community as a whole. We've also done things like partnering with local, um, employers and other opportunities for not only our residents, but the employers as well. I looked at the list today, and I think we had over 100 partners in this program, local partners, helping us from everything, from education to employment to other self-sufficiency. So, that's really the power of investing in these innovative housing solutions. So, I just wanted to kind of let the council also know, I pulled up some demographics, and many of our residents are active members of the community, working in local gas stations, food service, healthcare, childcare, and roofing companies, just to name a few. Over the past year, the average income for Greenhaven residents has increased by nearly $1,500 annually. Of the income received at the Greenhaven Apartments, 63.4% comes from wages, 26.6% comes from social security or military pay, and only 10% from public assistance. And that's one of the important numbers I want people to know, because as we know, in previous times, people made assumptions about who resides in these apartments, but these are the people working in our community. So, I just really wanna say thank you very much for your support, and let you know that I am committed to continuing to try to fill that gap of the monies that the city is assisting us in submitting a successful application to MHFA.
Thank you, Jackie, for that informative.
Yeah.
Understanding of, of, uh, your department and what you do. Uh, we do have a motion in a second.
So, Mayor Council, I just wanted to draw your attention to a few things, then, in the resolution. Um, one is that we're committing the 2.464 million. Second is that executing a promissory note in the amount of the local match set forth at 0% with a maturity date of 30 years. Third, that the city of Hibbing could accept in lieu of cash payments for that note, other sources of repayment, including but not limited to the HRA's Greenhaven apartment transfer of that at fair market value, IRRR grants for the fiscal year, um, 2026, which opens on July 1, which we've been encouraged to apply for. Um, and that there's no prepayment penalty if the HRA gets different grants from different sources, as we are seeking out and collaborating on, um, that those funds can be used to repay the city's note, and that should any portion of the HRA, um, the LLP that owns the Masabi Manor, if they sell it to another, um, entity, that this note would be due. So, we've tried to put some safeguards in as well for the city and the funds that the taxpayers are investing in this. And then, further, that at the end of that, um, 30-year term, the city council may, um, look at that and agree to forgive the remaining amount, um, but we are committed to working towards, um, making that amount be zero at that time, so. Am I missing anything?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Yes, Counselor.
Jackie, thank you for your presentation. Um, the grant application is due in July, is that correct?
Yes, it is Ju-, do I believe July 14th?
July 10.
July 10, sorry, yes. But we, um, always plan to submit it before the 4th of July, for obvious reasons, and it's quite a big ask, so we don't wanna come in at the last minute.
And you said it's very competitive. When might you receive word if you're successful?
In December of 2025.
Perfect. Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Jackie, what is, uh, you, you had mentioned it's on a point total. What are we looking to achieve, uh, with, with the investment? Uh, you mentioned our investment would be about a 16-point increase, and what are you trying to achieve with a total, uh, point system that would put you in good shape?
Well, we'd like to get as high as we were last year at the 150, it was the 150s, but the problem is it's sliding, right? Because it's competitive, so it's a matter of what other applications look like. So, if we're able to score points in all of the categories, which we've done everything we possibly could in every other category, but quite frankly, the local match typically, not only does it give you the points, but I do believe there's a level of showing the political support from the community in your application as well.
Very good. And, and if everything went through, uh, after approval, if it should happen tonight, we're looking at about a $58 million, uh, project.
Um, actually, 18.
Between the two, he means.
Between the two.
Oh, oh, yes.
Yes, okay.
50, I thought you said 15.
Yeah.
Okay, no.
All right, we have, uh, any other discussion? Okay, we have first and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council.
Thank you.
Excellent. My second item is a request to approve Resolution 2506. Candy, is that one still 04?
That's, Candy, is, is that correct?
Uh, for B would be 250604.
Perfect. Authorizing the application for an acceptance of a development partnership grant for the fiscal year 2026 cycle from the Department of IRRR for the Hibbing Downtown Traffic and Parking Study. This is a project that I have been working on with our city engineer to look at, um, the traffic flow and the parking needs in our downtown. We have received two RFPs. Um, they both come in roughly about the same amount, so we are requesting authorization to apply for a grant of $25,000 to offset half of the costs of this particular project.
Very good. Hearing what, uh, Ms. Sullivan had to say regarding application for an acceptance of a development partnership grant, wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Counselor Swiber.
Support.
Support by Counselor Whitney. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. See, Ben.
Excellent. Tonight's request is to approve Resolution 250605, requesting free conveyance of certain parcels from the Hibbing Public Utility for the purpose of constructing a public access road to support the HRA of Hibbing's development of Cobb Cook Place and Masabi Manor. In your packet, you will see, um, the picture of how the road would be laid out to connect from Ninth Avenue all the way to First Avenue. Um, it's called Fortieth Street on one side, and it would connect to 39th Street on the other side of the development. Um, and the parcels that the HPU is in, I, I guess, I'm not sure exactly, do they own them with the city somehow? Anyways, the HPU is listed as the taxpayer on these parcels. So, we need to request, um, an easement, um, to allow for the right of way and the utility easement to go through those particular parcels. Um, do you want me to list them off, or do you have them?
You know, I, I think for record sake, if you wouldn't mind, that would be great.
Okay. I just want to make sure that I've got them all listed here. Okay, so it is, the parcels identified as 139005004696, 140029000607, and 140029000609, have been identified as essential to the alignment and construction of this public access corridor.
Very good. Okay, so hearing what, uh, Ms. Sullivan had to say regarding conveyance of certain parcels from Hibbing Public Utilities for the purpose in construction of a public access road, wishes of the council.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Support by Counselor Bayless. Any other discussions from Ms. Sullivan? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. D, Ms. Sullivan.
Item D is a request to approve Resolution 250606, authorizing the city of Hibbing to make application to and accept funds for fiscal year 2026 grant cycle from the Department of IRRR in, uh, the Commercial Redevelopment Grant Program for the redevelopment of 620 East 16th Street, Hibbing, Minnesota. This is the, um, property that city council secured, um, earlier this year with a warehouse that is, um, falling in on itself. Um, Attorney Borland and our building official have been working to secure that property and to get quotes on, um, demolition of that and abatement of the items inside, and, uh, we're moving towards, hopefully, demolition of that and, uh, cleaning up the life safety, um, hazard that's there right now.
Very good. Hearing what Ms. Sullivan had to say, application to accept funds, the grant cycle, uh, for rehabilitation, commercial redevelopment grant, wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Counselor Whitney.
Support.
Support by Counselor Swiber. Any other discussions? Are, are, it is the old Sullivan building, is what we're talking about?
Correct.
I just want, okay, very good.
Correct. I do have a potential redevelopment, um, interested in that particular prop, property, but I am also talking with city staff because, um, there's a potential that it may be a good site for some public use, and we have to, uh, determine that before we move forward with anything.
Very good. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. E, Ms. Sullivan.
Excellent. Final item tonight is a request to approve Resolution 250608, to enter into the purchase agreement with the Housing and Redevelopment Authority of Hibbing for the conveyance of real property at 3900 Fifth Avenue West. This property is the one that was appraised at 42,000 and was secured by the tax forfeit auction from St. Louis County for the Masabi Manor development.
Very good. Hearing what Ms. Sullivan had to say regarding purchase agreement with the Housing and Redevelopment Authority of Hibbing, uh, wishes of the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Support by Counselor Bayless. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, one note, because Counselor Hoffman-Sockman usually asks me this, um, this is only to be conveyed upon Jackie's successfully, or the HRA's successfully securing the funds to build on this property.
Very good. Thank you for that point.
Yes.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you.
This time, we move on to Finance Director, Ms. Mulder.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This evening, I'm offering Resolution 25-06-07, transferring collection responsibility for solid waste users in Hibbing. This is for collection of the St. Louis County landfill operations fee that is currently being collected by the city on behalf of the county, and it's being billed in our monthly HPU bills. The process in which we collect the fee is an administrative burden for our department. I recently learned that other neighboring communities have been switching the collection process over to the county, and I'd like to request Hibbing do the same, and that's why I'm requesting approval of this resolution.
So, our collection responsibility rather going through the PUC, or HPU would go through the county?
Yep, so instead of them having us collect it, and then we pay them quarterly, they would just collect it directly from the taxpayers.
Would you know what other cities are doing that right now?
Um, I believe around the east range. I know, I think it was Gilbert was the one that I recently got the template of the resolution from that was making the change.
Very good. All right, hearing what Ms. Mulder had to say, wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Counselor Swyberger.
Support.
Support by Counselor Hildebrand. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Mulder. Mr. Prisinski, we move on to you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you. I actually have one item for action this evening, if you would, please do that. So we've been trying to get rid of some of our surplus equipment. We've been using various means to do that, one of which was electronic auctions. We have one piece of equipment, specifically a backhoe, that didn't sell during our last auction. And remember, we do set a, a reserve, so they have to meet a certain price to be able to purchase that. It didn't meet the reserve, so we retained that piece of equipment. What we would like to do next with that piece of equipment is go to a retailer and have them sell it on consignment on our behalf. We jumped this through legal. We think we've met all the terms and conditions under the statute by doing this. I have in front of you the agreement. It's a one-page, I think it's a 12% commission to do the sale. Hopefully, we'll come out of it even a little bit better, but I would like permission to go ahead and execute that agreement with that retailer and get that piece of equipment sold and recoup as much value as we can from it. So I would stand for questions, otherwise a, a motion would be appreciated.
Okay, we'll get a motion first, and if we have questions, so what we're looking for is authorize road machinery supply to basically sell this piece of equipment at 12% fee that they would secure.
Correct.
Okay, wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Counselor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Counselor Whitney. Any discussion for Mr. Prisinski?
What percentage was the auction, the auction site giving?
Great question. I would say it'd probably be in the 10%. I would have to follow up, Counselor, for that.
So we're still, we're still looking and trying to get our reserve out of this consignment sale?
Like to net out of it. The reserve was set. I'm hoping to get more out of it than the reserve, but that would be the, the minimum that we would accept.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye. Motion carries. Greg, is that it?
That's it for my.
Very good. All right, we go at this time on the bids and quotes. Mr. Story, you're up.
Mayor Council, if you recall, last year, we budgeted for the fabrication of five gates to install at various locations around the city to keep trespassing and garbage dumping down to a minimum. We received those gates from RC Fabricators. I received one quote from Begala's to install these gates. So there's one 20-foot gate that includes 24-inch foundations on each post. That's $3,650 to install. The 25-foot gates have two 24-inch foundations on each side, so four total. Those are $5,650 to install. So the total cost, we'd, we'd budget this through three departments, sanitation, streets and alleys, and then the waste treatment plant. So on the sanitation budget, we'd have $14,950. On the streets and alleys, $5,650. And then the treatment plant, $5,650. So these gates will go at the First Avenue snow dump, the sludge disposal site off 25th Street, Seventh Avenue in North Hibbing where the Masabi Trail crosses, kinda close to the entrance to the Mine View, the city gravel pit behind Ranger Chevrolet, and the snowmobile trail off of 25th Street, north, north side of 25th Street. So we'd like to install the gates at those locations. It's all on city property. We have trouble there with, with trespassing and garbage dumping, so we'd like to try to minimize that. So I'm asking for council approval to award this to Begala's.
All right, hearing Mr. Story had to say regarding installation of 20 and 25-foot gates, wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Counselor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Counselor Hoffman-Sockman. Any other discussion? Jesse, just timeframe, they're already made, so it's just.
They're already made. It'll be talking with the Begala's group, it looks like, about late July.
All right, very good.
Today, it'll be before winter.
Okay, thank you. In that being said, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
I move on to Tyler. We'll have you filling in for Chief Estney tonight, so.
Well, I've already spoke, but good evening, Mayor, Council. We're looking for approval from a quote for Motorola Solutions in the amount of $11,775.16. The purchase is one Squad radio and one portable radio, this is a state bid quote. We're just looking for your approval.
All right, hearing what was said regarding radio quotes for Motorola Solutions, wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Counselor Swyberger.
Support.
Support by Counselor Bayless. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye. Motion carries. Could I have motion for adjournment?
So moved.
So moved by Counselor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Counselor Hildebrand. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye. Motion carries. Thank you.